Hey, it's Brian Kropf and welcome to Newton Falls X. Since this is gonna be the first video that I'm sharing to the Newton Falls X YouTube channel, I wanted to take a minute to kind of briefly describe and give a brief overview of what Newton Falls X is, why I created it, and hopefully what it can kind of become with your help. First, if you haven't yet, join the Newton Falls X Facebook group where members can share ideas, make suggestions, ask meaningful questions, have long-form discussions and intelligent conversations, and share news and information with the community. And just generally be more informed about the village you live in and love. Next, subscribe to the Newton Falls X YouTube channel. Click on the little bell icon so that way you get alerts anytime I post or share or upload new video content. That way you guys can stay informed and know exactly what's going on. We'd love to have you subscribe, so make sure you hit the subscribe button as well. You can also join the Newton Falls X Twitter page, @NewtonFallsX, where you can share content, comments, you can share images, videos, you can ask questions. You can use the hashtag NF on the X to share questions, comments in real time. I'll get those immediately if you have a question, maybe while I'm at a meeting. NewtonFallsX.com, the main website, is a work in progress. I'm working on it right now. It'll be launched as soon as I kind of find time to finish it. I'll make sure I let everybody know when it goes live and when I roll it out. You can always reach me via email at hello@newtonfallsx.com. And I will be letting everybody know as soon as the NewtonFallsX.com website is launched and ready to go, I'll make an announcement and let everybody know that they can go and check it out. So I'm really looking forward to that. So, real quick, Newton Falls X is basically short for the Newton Falls Experience. I created it to have a place to examine, explain, and expose all the good and the bad things going on here in town. In essence, I wanted to break down the Newton Falls Experience. That's really what this is about, and giving everyone a place to watch, listen, learn, and engage with all things Newton Falls, whether it be the community, other individuals in the community, just a place for people to kind of congregate and do their thing. And we really don't have that, so I wanted to kind of create that. And hopefully that's what this will be and what it will become in the future. I have big plans for the many different platforms of Newton Falls X. And I hope to create, share a ton of really cool content with you guys. Things like city council meeting agenda breakdowns, meeting recaps and reviews, interviews, and with local personalities and officials, which should be a lot of fun. Pictures, videos, and a whole lot more. I want to, I'm gonna create a whole history and nostalgia page. I've seen a lot of some of the other groups where there's some old photos and stuff. Newton Falls has a ton of rich history. I'd love for people to share, you know, images, videos, old stuff, for people to be able to come in and just look at pictures and photos, kind of have a collection place for all of that. So you're welcome to share old photos and pictures. Permissions and stuff would be great too, to be able to share that stuff. Again, the idea is to provide people with as much useful information as I possibly can. And just in order to provide people with the ability to be informed, make educated decisions and stuff as far as Newton Falls is concerned, and moving forward, and just to kind of lift the entire town up. I think it's best for everybody. Okay, so with all that being said, let's go ahead and jump into the March 2nd, 2020 meeting agenda breakdown that I'm gonna do here and kind of go over all the different ordinances. And since this is gonna be the first kind of breakdown that I do of an agenda, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna go through exactly how the meetings go in case you've never been to a meeting, never attended a meeting. If maybe your first time watching, kind of follow along and know exactly what's happening and what's going on. Just, you know, to have a better understanding of how our city government works and how, what you can expect from our meetings and what you can expect, terminologies, that kind of stuff, what they're talking about, what they're, you know, why they do the things that they do. I'll try to break that down as best I can, give a little bit more information about that kind of stuff. Because I think it's really interesting. I know how interested I was to kind of get involved. And I know the more and more I've gotten involved and the more I know, the more I've learned, I should say, the more experiences and stuff that I've had, the more confident I've become, and the more interested I've become in what's going on. The more I want to be involved and the more I want to participate. And hopefully that you'll feel the same way. Hopefully, once you have, you know, more information and you feel confident and informed, you'll be able to engage and interact and speak your mind and ask good questions and expect, you know, good answers and to know that you're being represented and taken care of. And the people in power, the people, I don't even like to say power, the people that are in positions of authority that are representing you, me, all the other residents, taxpayers, parents, business owners, just fans, families, multi-generational families here in town, people that live here their whole lives, people that have moved away and still want to keep up with what's going on. Everybody, so that way everybody can be more informed and we can all make better decisions and just elevate the entire town. We can make this place a really, really great place to live. And this is how we do it. So, so I'm gonna get into the agenda breakdown here for the March 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. And let's kind of dive into it, guys. Okay, so let's dive into the breakdown here of the regular meeting agenda of the Monday, March 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Newton Falls City Council. It's gonna be held like it always is, has been for quite a while now, at City Hall, the administration building right there across from McDonald's and Taco Bell right here in town. The meeting starts at 6:00 PM, which is pretty standard. So if you have never been to a meeting and haven't had a chance to, you know, either see a meeting online or, like I said, physically attend a meeting, go to a meeting in person, it is an experience and I think everybody should do it. It's very interesting and it's engaging. It's something that you want to get involved in. So I suggest, if you haven't been to a meeting, haven't seen a meeting, I suggest you take the time to go ahead and do that. It's really worth it and you should, you should do that. So how a meeting works, I'm just gonna kind of go over the agenda here. If you've never been to a meeting, like I said, I'll break it down here. How the meeting, what you can expect as far as the timeline. So the meeting starts at six o'clock, there's a call to order, so everybody kind of comes in. Make sure your phones and stuff are off. Everybody sits down. They do a pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer. And usually someone will come in, pastor or someone from one of the local churches or one of the local congregations will come in and say a prayer, which is nice. And then they do a roll call, which the mayor, Ken Klein, will do a roll call of all those in attendance for the evening as far as council's concerned, all the council members. So the city council members are as follows. You've got Zachary Savett from Ward 1, who is the appointed councilman for Ward 1. You've got John Barack, who just won his reelection for Ward 2. You've got appointed and unelected councilman Lyle Waddell in Ward 3. Sandra Braymeier was just elected for Ward 4. And of course, Mr. Terry Alperini in his second term is the at-large councilman. So, there's your roll call. You'll also have Mayor Ken Klein, of course. City manager David Lynch. You'll have law director Joseph Fritz. And of course, city clerk Kathy King. Anna Musson is always there too, or usually there. She's the finance director. She's typically always in attendance and she gives all the financial reports. So they go through the entire roll call and then there's going to be a special presentation. And that's when the special presentation period is. And on this meeting agenda, as of, as of today, Paul Woodard, who is the superintendent of Newton Falls Schools, will be speaking. I'm guessing he's going to be speaking about the renewal levels, levies that will be on the ballot here in March for the schools, because the school has failed repeatedly to get any kind of funding as far as levies, taxes, increases, that kind of stuff. And honestly, I believe it's in part because of the people that they have running the school and the administration, and Mr. Woodard is one of those people. So I don't expect that to change, because the people that are, that are in control and that are making the decisions over there haven't changed. So you've got one or two or three people that are pulling the strings that are basically in control over the school and you see what you get. So next though, is something that is kind of near and dear to my heart. Certificate of Achievement to Rachel Grunder, who started her own, her own hair, hair business called Solo Styles LLC. I love Rachel. She's fantastic. She actually does my wife's hair. She does an amazing job. Her hair always looks fantastic. We've actually done work for Rachel and her family. So we like Rachel a lot and we're really, really happy for her. We're really excited that, that she's gonna be awarded with this certificate of achievement by the city. These are the kind of things that need to happen more and more often. Recognizing one of our own who's doing what, what the city really needs to move for, which is doing it on our own, pulling herself up, I guess you might call it by pulling herself up by her bootstraps or whatever you want to call it, but she has started her business. She's done it on her own and she's great at what she does. She's a fantastic business. She's a fantastic stylist, just a good person as well. She kind of will do anything for, for her clients and that's really awesome. So it's really cool to see the certificate of achievement going to Rachel Grunder. Congratulations for that. So we're excited about that for you. Next is going to be the public comment section. And this is going to be the public comment section that is where people can speak on things that are on the agenda for this evening. So I'll get down to that. I'm just gonna kind of break down exactly how a meeting is laid out right now first. So that will be the public comment section where you can speak on items that are identified on the agenda and only things that are on the agenda. Next, you'll have the reports by the members of council. The mayor, the council members, finance director, law director, city manager will all give reports or they won't depending on, you know, if they had anything going on, if they were in committees or anything along those lines throughout the last couple of weeks since the last meeting. So that's pretty much how that works. They'll get just a rundown of what they've been doing, what they've been up to. So then next, you'll have the approval of the previous minutes, where they'll just vote basically on approving the minutes from the previous meeting. Pretty standard practice. Next, you'll have the public hearings, which is basically a second reading of an amendment. Public hearings are, the way our city council, the way our charter is set up is anytime there's an ordinance submitted or proposed by one of our council members or city manager, whoever proposes these ordinances and resolutions, our city charter states that unless it's an emergency, which I can kind of get into, we'll talk about emergencies as well, but when an ordinance is, was submitted or proposed to the council, there has to be two readings. So it has to be read at two separate meetings before it can actually be approved as legislation. So this gives the public an opportunity to voice, you know, their concerns, their issues that they may have with a particular ordinance or resolution. It just gives people an opportunity to speak up and speak out, which is what government's supposed to be about, representative government's supposed to be about. So people take advantage of that. That's a good thing. Next, you'll have unfinished business, which is again, anything from previous meetings. And then you will roll right into new business for anything that happens to be about new things, new ordinances, new amendments, new resolutions, that kind of stuff that are being presented at that particular meeting. So for March 2nd, 2020, you're going to have six different items. You've got, looks like two different ordinances and four resolutions that are gonna be on the agenda. And I will break those down here shortly. Next, you're gonna have the final public comment section that is after all of the agenda items and everything's been discussed, all the roll call, all the, or not the roll call, after all of the reports, after all the old business, new business has been, has been discussed. Then it's time for the second public comment section. Now, the second public comment section, there are no limitations as far as what the public can talk about. It's not based on just things that are on the agenda. So if you have comments or anything you'd like to discuss involving the city or anything in general, you are more than welcome to come up and speak. You have three minutes. They limit you to three minutes and you can speak and talk about anything you'd like. Once all those public comments are done, you'll have closing remarks from the mayor, city manager, council, that kind of stuff. And then if council needs to or has a, has a need to, they will motion to recess into executive session. And for this evening, they will actually be motioning, according to this, they'll be motioning into an executive session for the purchase or sale of property. So I can kind of go into that a little bit deeper too, if anybody would like me to, as far as executive session. Essentially, executive session just means that council will go into closed, a closed chamber and discuss items of sensitive nature essentially. So you've got personal matters, personnel matters, employment dismissal, discipline, that kind of stuff, purchases of properties, court actions, et cetera, stuff like that. So sensitive material. They'll go in and discuss that in executive session and then once that's all done, they'll come out and they'll adjourn. So, okay, let's dive into some of the actual agenda items here for tonight, for March 2nd. One of the first things that the council is gonna go into are special presentations. And the special presentations this evening are gonna be Paul Woodard, the Newton Falls School Superintendent, which I'm guessing will be about the levy or levy renewals. And then there'll be a certificate of achievement given to and awarded to Rachel Grunder of Solo Styles LLC. So congratulations to Rachel. The ordinances that are gonna be on the agenda this evening, like I said, there are two new ordinances and four resolutions. The first ordinance is going to be ordinance 2020-07. It's an ordinance amending 20, it's gonna be an ordinance amending ordinance 2014-09. It's establishing pay rates for city employees. Just a, basically just a pay rate raise for part-time employers, or I'm sorry, for part-time laborers. So I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. I think these guys, we need quality workers here in town. Maintenance and upkeep of town are one of the most important things that need done. And honestly, you're kind of lacking, so if you need to pay guys a little bit more money to get them to, to have some incentive to, to work hard, I guess that's what it takes. So we need to pay, we need to be competitive as far as paying our people, our laborers and stuff. It's hard work, so pay them adequately. I think that's a good thing, me personally. The next item on the list is ordinance 2020-08. And this is, I'll just go ahead and read the title of the ordinance, amending codified ordinance chapter 121, section 121.02, Officers and Staff, Council Staff in Reference to Delivery of Council Agenda and Documentation. So what that means? This ordinance, 2020-08, is sponsored by Councilman Bariak from Ward 2. And what it means, and what it's requesting is, as of right now, in our charter, the, it states that council will receive their agenda packets. Basically what I'm reading right now, the full, the full meat of the agenda, all the details, what exactly is included. They receive those by noon on Saturday prior to a meeting. So today's meeting is Monday, it's Monday morning right now. Monday's meeting will be 6:00 PM tonight. As of right now, the charter states that our council members and anybody that else, anybody else that wants to receive council packets in the agenda are to receive them no later than noon Saturday prior to the meeting. So Councilman Bariak is requesting that, an amendment, a change to the, a change to the ordinance or a change to the charter to make that noon, change it from noon Saturday to 4:00 PM on Thursday. So basically what that means is council would get all of their agenda information, their council packets. They would have them by Thursday at 4:00 PM as opposed to Saturday at noon, which would give them more time to go over things, be more informed themselves, to know exactly what's included in those council packets. Because a lot of times, if someone sponsored one of these, if an ordinance is sponsored by a member of council or maybe it's sponsored by the city manager or something along those lines, council may not even know what was in that ordinance or what's being proposed until they get this packet. They may not have any discussions with the, the person who sponsored that, that legislation. So this may be their first, first view or first reading at all, first acknowledgement that these are, what's going on. So I think the sooner the better. I think it's a good thing. And if council gets them at 4:00 PM Thursday, then that means I can get it at 4:00 PM Thursday. You can get it at 4:00 PM Thursday and we can have more time to dissect these kind of things and to know exactly what's going on and just be more informed, which is, I think is a good thing. So we'll see what council does with that. So that's ordinance 2020-08. A change in the charter for when council and anyone else basically gets the agenda items. It would be a change from receiving council information and agenda packets noon Saturday prior to a meeting on Monday. And it would change that to receiving those packets at 4:00 PM on Thursday prior to a meeting. So they'd be getting that information sooner. I think that's a good thing. I'd like to hear your thoughts on that as well. Next is going to be one of the most important ordinances, I think, for this particular meeting. And it's going to be ordinance 2020-09, and it's an ordinance repealing ordinance 2020-06 and authorizing council to enter into a new contract with the Newton Falls First Congregational Church to purchase that church for a quarter of a million dollars to be used as the new administration building for the city council and city administration. Now, to give a little bit of hindsight here, the ordinance that it's repealing, 2020-06, is the ordinance that allowed the city manager to go and enter into a contract with the First Congregational Church as of, as of February 3rd's meeting to purchase the church for $250,000 in an emergency situation, which was not. So we actually, myself and a couple other individuals filed a referendum petition, petition to try to overturn council's passed vote on purchasing that church for $250,000 in an emergency status. So we collected signatures for a petition and we're gonna turn that in. Now council has put this ordinance, 2020-09, to revoke 2020-06 altogether. Basically like it never happened and then create a new contract under 2020-09 that would basically be the, essentially the same contract, the $250,000 contract with the First Congregational Church, but in the time from the first contract, 2020-06 ordinance, to now, the city's had a chance to do an assessment and get some assessments done on the property and on the building itself. And have found out that there are some issues. There are several issues. One being a serious sewer issue that the seller, the church has agreed apparently now to pay. So the point of this is, the city has now, this ordinance has been sponsored by Mayor Klein, all the council people to revoke 2020-06, bring in 2020-09, create a new contract altogether and have the seller pay for this. So I think that's a good thing to have the seller pay for those kind of issues. I think it's a good idea to do that. Now, I also think it's a good idea to present this and this contract in a non-emergency fashion, which was part of, which was basically my main issue with the purchase of the church to begin with, was that they tried to do it in an emergency status to begin with. That's, that's my first problem. Now, my second problem with the purchase of the First Congregational Church by the city is the fact that it's going to cost a quarter of a million dollars just for the purchase of a building. And that doesn't include any other costs for renovation, changes to any kind of zoning, where they have to do any kind of the fire systems or sprinkler systems, which are extremely expensive to get up to code. And if there's any kind of zoning change or anything along those lines, you can't be grandfathered in. Those things are very expensive and those things need to be, you know, checked and need to be maintained. So it's a huge expenditure. I mean, we're talking potentially half a million dollars, up to a million dollars as far as who knows what's gonna go into the investment of upkeep and maintenance and getting this place ready to move into, moving everything. And there are so many other pressing needs here in town. The purchase of this building is a want. It's not a need. And to anybody out there that knows the difference between wants and needs, we all want stuff. I mean, that's just, that's pretty typical, that's standard human behavior. But, you know, being responsible and being good stewards of taxpayer money is taking care of needs first and not wants. And this is absolutely a want, it's not a need. That building that they're in now has worked and will continue to work for the foreseeable future. The city's not in danger, you know, the welfare of this, of the city and the safety of the city's not in danger because they don't move from one building to the other. There are so many other things that the town needs right now. You just walk around town, go to the parks, go down to the waterfall, which, look at our, our water tower. It's been beautifully lit and it looks amazing, looks fantastic. But it doesn't help with the overall quality of life in town. It's doesn't, it doesn't improve my quality of life. It looks nice. I mean, I, I like it. The lighting of the falls was a, was a great idea. I think it looks, you know, the concept is strong. But unfortunately, you're lighting up one of the ugliest things in our town. If you actually gone down there and looked at the falls, it's not pretty. It needs cleaned. It needs organized. It needs, you know, most of the places in town are just run down and beat up and have not been maintenance or maintained. There's been no upkeep over the last 10-plus years. In the time that I've been here, I, I moved here in June of 2010 and bought a house here. Mayor Waddell has, took over in 2010 and was the mayor up until just recently. And in that time period, I mean, like I said, you can kind of walk around town and just take a look at things. Things are in disrepair. Things are falling apart. Park benches, parks, fences, roads, sidewalks. You know, some people in town have, have volunteered and done some really nice things as far as like with the holidays that we did, people did tiger paws on the sidewalks all through town for the holidays with the, the peanut stuff that was scattered through town. Historic downtown was really nice. But again, the things that really need fixed and the money that needs put into these things and the maintenance, the upkeep is really what's important and what's, is really what's lacking. And which is why the purchase of this huge building, you know, 16,000 square feet, who knows how much it's gonna cost? That money can be used for so many other things that we really need right now. Matter of fact, one thing that we need is a, a new website, which the city's website is not good. It's, the address is ci.nutonfalls.oh.us is the website for the city of Newton Falls. And it, it should be upgraded. It should be updated. It should be a place where everybody can go to find information, kind of the same stuff that I'm sharing with you now. It's very difficult to find the information there now. It's not easily to, it's not easy to locate. So anyway, back to what we're talking about. Ordinance 2020-09 is a new contract to be entered into with the First Congregational Church. It is not an emergency measure as of right now, which is good, which means the public can get a chance to speak on this. And I hope that they do. As of right now, I don't have any intent on filing a referendum against this unless people speak out. I mean, that's, this is ultimately, we wanted, we wanted people to have an opportunity to speak their piece. And I will, I'll speak my piece as well when I have the opportunity. And I'll tell them, you know, basically this, that I just, I don't think it's the right time. I think it's a, I think that money could be better spent on other things that we need right now that would better serve the majority of Newton Falls residents. This new building doesn't serve the majority of residents. It serves council, it serves the administration for giving them a nice new building to work out of. And I'm sure that would be nice. I'm sure they would love to have that. But if you go down to the administration building now and just look around the building, the building's not in good shape. It's not in good shape and none of the other city buildings are in good shape either. And they're all going to need money and maintenance and repairs and all these other things, regardless of whether the city buys this church or not. Where's that money coming from? The reason the city has all this money all of a sudden is because they haven't spent on maintenance. They haven't spent it on upkeep. And, you know, the markets, I keep hearing about the markets and how all these investments and stuff. I've looked at the markets and I'm in the markets. I know how the markets work. And the city's been earning money on, on their investments for the last 15 years. The market's been improving, has been pretty much on a steady incline since 2010. It's been going up. I mean, I know we had a recession. But they've been earning money on their investments, just like everybody else that's been in the market. So it's not like they just had a windfall all of a sudden of a bunch of money. It's because they weren't investing the money properly. They weren't spending it on maintenance and upkeep and that's why the city's been falling apart around us and now they want a new building. So with all that being said, long story short, I don't agree with the purchase of the building, but we'll see how this goes with 2020-09 and I will be there to discuss that at length. The contract and all the information is here on ci.nutonfalls.oh.us. It's the city website. You can read it all for yourself. The next item on the agenda is a resolution 8-2020. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a, and execute a contract with Untangled Technology for technology consult, consultations for consulting. And it's sponsored by the city manager. This is to, pretty much as it states, enter into a contract with Untangled Technology Incorporated, which will be working with us, I'm guessing, providing information, insight on the new fiber that the city manager has been touting to the residents here in town. I don't see how that would be a problem. It looks like they're, the amount's not going to exceed $5,000 initially. If you look at the contract, I think they charge a few hundred dollars an hour for consulting. Let's see, I think they give a little bit more information. $175 an hour. The initial contract would be capped at $5,000. Any future amounts will be determined later. So I think that could be a good thing. Hopefully they can provide some information. I believe the owner of the company will be coming in. It looks like he'll attend a two-hour meeting to discuss fiber services. I would like to see him come in and do a presentation or come in to speak, I think would be beneficial. So that's resolution 08-2020. The next one would be resolution 09-2020. A resolution to accept the Ohio, the one Ohio memorandum of understanding and authorizing the village solicitor to accept the memorandum regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds. So this is having to do with, I believe it is a, it's litigation. Hold, trying to hold a company called opioid pharmaceutical supply chain participants accountable for damage caused by misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance. So this has to do with the opioid situation here. There must be a, hopefully the city manager will go into this a little bit more in depth, because I don't, I'm not familiar with this. Other than just reading this here, what it is. So hopefully he will go into some more depth about exactly what this is. If you'd like to read more, read specifically what that is, go to ci.nutonfalls.oh.us. You can look under mayor, council, and legislation. You click into there. And if you scroll down, you'll see there are some links under 2020, under the year 2020, where it says council, council agenda and legislation. You can go in and click under council agenda, March 2, 2020, and pull up exactly what I'm reading and reading off to you guys. We have resolution 10-2020, and this is to add services to annexed, to almost 28 acres of annexed property in Newton Township and Braceville Township, so more property that was annexed they want to provide services to or potentially provide services to. Utilities, water, sewer, that kind of stuff. They will provide the following services. Police, street maintenance, ice and snow removal, and stormwater utility. Water and sewer may be available at the owner's expense. Those services will be available and provided when the city of Newton Falls ordinance or resolution accepting the annexation becomes final and the annexation becomes effective as provided by law. So they're trying to annex another 30 acres, 28 acres. According to this resolution, they have 100% of the property owner's signatures to allow this annexation. So again, I'm looking forward to hearing some more information here from the city manager in regards to this. This resolution has been sponsored by the mayor and it looks like all of the council people, including city manager David Lynch as well. So they're all, they're all on board with the annexing this 28 acres and providing utilities. Last will be resolution 11, number 11-2020. And that will be a resolution authorizing the county engineer to act on the city's behalf to advertise for bids for the 2020 paving project. So the city is going to have some paving done. And this is just gonna allow the county engineers to enter into, to act on the city's behalf to accept bids, which is pretty standard practice, I believe. So that's sponsored by the city manager. So that is all of the agenda items. I tried to cover all these things in as much detail as I possibly could without being too boring. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out. Leave some comments below. I'm looking forward to kind of doing this with all of our meetings coming up. That's kind of the plan, is to try to do, try to get people more informed. Like I said, that's the whole point of this, is to get people informed. And then if you're informed, you can be more engaged. You can ask more questions and know confidently what you're asking and how you're going about it. And that's what we need. We need people that are informed and educated, making educated decisions. Uh and that's what we need, we need people that are informed and educated, making educated decisions, so. Guys, go check out Newtonfallsx.com, uh make sure you join the group on Facebook, uh the Newton Falls X group on Facebook. Follow us on Twitter at NewtonfallsX, and make sure to join, subscribe, and set your alerts for the Newton Falls X YouTube channel. Thanks, guys, I really appreciate you watching this, um click like or whatever, I guess, I don't, I, it's not really that important, I don't know, I don't really need that many likes. I just want people to be informed, so um again, share this, that's what I really like people to do, is kind of share this and get other people involved. Let everybody know that this is gonna be the place where they can um stay informed with everything that's going on here in Newton Falls, and can do so. This is gonna be the place where people can stay informed.